Ready? All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order today, Tuesday, April 1st. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Dean?
Yeah.
Ms. Kansper?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Ms. Mr. Horton, sorry.
Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Boo boo.
Second?
Second.
Adam? Oh, any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing done. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Kansper?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Please join me in the French. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, do I have a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official per Ohio Revised Code 121.22.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Kansper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We're going to go to the special education.
All right, if you remember last time we spoke, we were talking about really kind of the impetus being master facilities, right? Because the master facilities in the current plan, when you look at our kind of map of where sites are, and this question came up even in the fall, it was where is Central in this? And it was, well, we haven't really kind of decided. So then taking a step back from that as well, just trying to make sure that we were all on the same page, right? Because Central has morphed and changed over time. And so we started kind of working through this document of data that we had compiled. So you'll notice I gave this back to you, you're like, actually, I've already seen this, okay? The highlighted portion is new information or changed, okay? So I wanted to draw your attention to that. And what I mean by that is originally we had talked about that there were seven staff members there, okay? This is on the first page. I did want to qualify, there are more than seven staff. There are seven full-time teachers, but when you look at that list of staff, that is definitely over seven people, right? It's, I think it's 19, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 17, 17. So I just wanted to clarify that, so you have teachers and then you have staff. So administrative assistants, principals, administrators, bells that we are using from other buildings. So I wanted to make sure that we clarified, just so we had the knowledge of how many people are actually needed to staff that building currently. The only difference would be, I mean, when you look at like, on the second page, you know, there's one bell of like ESL and a tutor, right? So that one is part-time. But I tried to show you like in the last two, you know, there's two bells here, and then there's four bells at West Freshman. So that's an equivalent of a full-time person. So this is literally every staff working in that building for this school year. And again, I just wanted you to be able to put a scope of how many entities or how many bodies, right, or staff members are being utilized for that building. Because there is a difference between teachers and staffing a building to be able to make it run. The other piece of that, and we'll kind of flex to the report card piece as well here, is this secondary document right here that I provided you. The last time we were together, it came up, could we get some more individualized data of who is, you know, currently at student population of Central? Because if you remember, we were looking at about eighty-three percent for SEL and medical needs. There was about thirteen percent for credit recovery. And then there was about 4.2% for alternative schedule. That was really new information for me. Like just being new, I always thought of Central more as credit recovery. I thought that number would be the eighty-two percent or the eighty-three percent, whereas more it was SEL, medical needs. So I said, can we look at every kid that is currently in Central and kind of figure out and drill down into that data? And that is what you have right in front of you. So we looked at all, again, hundred and ninety, I think there's two oh one at the time of this data, two oh two students that were there at Central because it changes with graduations and people coming in. And we kind of prioritize, these are the top three reasons that students are at Central, and here are some other additional pieces. So when you look at that, that really eighty-three percent, okay? You're talking mental health and emotional wellbeing support. And I gave you some examples there from that. There's attendance and school avoidance. That can be chronic absenteeism, like with House Bill 410, habitually truant, chronically truant. That can be school avoidance, meaning you just don't want to come into the environment. That can also mean, again, we've talked a little bit about size, difficulty of kind of managing the crowds or the transitions that we see at our high schools. And then academic recovery and flexibility, that's really that kind of thirteen percent. And that thirteen percent. So that number three, you're really looking at that thirteen percent of students are there. That number one and two is probably more in that eighty-three percent. What you have underneath are like some contributing factors. And I tried to break those down about, actually, the curriculum team, the MTSS team, broke those down into kind of what falls under some of those specific folks. Also, on the back of that data, you'll see other relevant Lakota Central data. Just kind of want to clarify a couple things here. The ninety-one that you see at grade eleven, the ninety-one students, you see a spike. That grade eleven is pretty high. That is more typical of a high school setting. That's not unique to Central. And what I mean by that is junior year is supposed to be the year of high school, right? And I say that because oftentimes when you talk about CCP or AP, kids enter the foyer into that world. A lot of times it's juniors, more so now, earlier, but definitely in the past junior year. I also think, again, academic rigor, again, from often students' perspectives or parents' perspectives, that picks up because then you're also looking more forward to post-secondary options of what that might be. But then also, I think it's just developmentally. You have social and academic life kind of colliding. The car has come, the dating has come, the academic rigor has come. Everything kind of converges kind of between that sophomore and junior year. So it's not surprising that you might see a heavier lift at that junior year where students are finding that maybe they're not as successful in the traditional setting. A lot of students, as we kind of worked through this, you know, how do, we asked the question, how does, how do people get, how do students get to Central? There is a lot of kind of self-referral, meaning that students might come to their counselor or might come to their teacher and say, hey, I don't think this is working. And then they start monitoring that. We start looking at data with our MTSS team. But it also can be parent-driven, self-referral-driven. It does come up with staff sometimes as well, like, hey, maybe this student is not thriving in this environment and we need to look at a different setting. But I wanted to make sure that you had this data in front of you as we continue to kind of just delve into what is our vision? How does Central fit into the overall plan, not only of Lakota local schools, but of master facilities particularly? As far as the report card data, they, there's only report card data from twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-two, twenty-three. I have those linked here, and I know you don't, you don't have your computers. But essentially, you're at one point five stars for both years. So there's not a glaring change in their report card data. The other thing that I did note, I didn't want to make note of on this as well, is under their schedule. Students earn a semester credit within a quarter, and students earn a year-long credit within a semester. That was not on there previously, so I wanted you to understand kind of maybe how sometimes kids feel more successful or how they graduate earlier. It is because they are accruing credits at a much faster rate. That, that's a combination of, you know, they're working at home, they have online capabilities. There's some Apex features involved, depending on their, on their class. So I did wanted you to realize how those, how they were kind of articulating through at a faster rate. And it's because it is a condensed format.
Is that true for all students?
That is true for all students, regardless of their impetus to get there. That is true for all students. But I didn't know if you had any questions about that? If there was any other additional data that you wanted to look at?
I have a quick question. The in-person attendance. Are they doing that, I guess?
Yes. So I did confirm, because there was, I wanted to make sure that I was accurately explaining in-person attendance. So the time that they are in-person, they are in-person with the teacher, receiving instruction, okay? Doesn't mean they're not utilizing their computer in some way or in something. But it is not a online course where I log in and I'm just doing my Apex work or something like that with a teacher. The teacher is standing in front of them and giving them instruction for the in-person piece. Then the other half of the day is the more online asynchronous, like what we call learning. The, I wanted to make sure, there is sometimes a flipped model, meaning like teachers are, you know, the student might do some of the at-home work online where they're looking at the lesson or getting some content. And then the teacher is coming in during the in-house portion or the in-person portion and giving support or doing work or doing conferencing. So it's not always the traditional, I'm going to say, direct instruction. It can look different, but it is with a teacher in-person, not an online asynchronous.
And the kids are coming, the attendance rate is high.
Now, the attendance rate is a little bit different to how we track this. Because if you remember, like in our kind of normal buildings, they're taking attendance every day, right? At the start of the day, they're taking daily attendance or taking period attendance. At Central, they do that attendance work on Friday, right? So that's why the teachers, again, students aren't reporting on Friday. They're doing that attendance work and making sure not only are they calculating their in-person seat time, but they're also looking at how much completion they're doing on their online work, which includes part of their attendance rate. So it's a combination of in-person, in your seat, but it's also a combination of are you taking the other half day and doing what you need to do online? And all of that together creates their attendance rate, which they submit on Fridays. So it's not quite a daily report. It's more of a weekly report in totality of your online work and your in-person attendance. And if a child is not being successful in one or both of those avenues, it would reflect in their attendance. Now, that's not to say that we don't have students at Central that, you know, we don't have to utilize House Bill 410, meaning we send attendance letters to, or maybe that they can be truant. We just, just like we do at all of the other buildings, we still have to track House Bill 410 and make sure they're meeting their attendance criteria, although their attendance criteria data points look different than a traditional student at like East or West Mac campus.
I have two questions. The first one is, how, what is the percentage of the in-person classes?
It's half.
Oh, it's half. Okay. During their virtual, do they all, at the same time, and they're structured?
Nope. So the virtual is very asynchronous. So I can log, I might log on at one o'clock and spend two or three hours on there. Isaac, you might log on at six o'clock and you might spend an hour. That very much is a student-driven process, right? So think, think kind of COVID-esque times, right? Where some kids were able to do it at a quicker rate, some kids needed more time, some kids might have family needs. And you, and you see that on this list, like family dynamics, where maybe they have to do babysitting in the afternoon and they don't log on until the evening to do the work. It is very individualized in what that virtual piece looks like.
So how is the monitor?
Completion of assignments.
So I can, I can do like two hours, and then I have a second, do three hours?
So if a student is not, so I, that's a good question too. There is a, yes, it's individualized, but we never want a student in those kind of virtual hours to kind of disappear, right? So if somebody hadn't logged on for several days, that's what those Fridays are used to say like, hey, yes, you got a lot of work done, but I haven't seen you for a couple of days. Are you still okay doing those check-ins? So that's where that Friday piece with staff, because remember on Fridays, staff don't have students. They're doing those check-ins, they're doing those attendance pieces, they're doing their own PD pieces. That's where it becomes a little bit different than the normal structure of a teacher. Because that lift on Friday is a lot more than it is each, each day. Instead of doing it bit by bit, they're doing that more lift on a Friday.
Have we considered, like, Butler Tech has a fifth-day experience. But then if somebody, if a child is falling behind or feeling like they're academically not where they need to be, they are required to come in on that fifth-day experience where others have flexibility to work or do whatnot. Have we considered that we could somehow rotate and have coverage and have those students who may need remediation, to come in on Friday?
I don't know if we have a formal structure for that, meaning like you said, like a rotation. But I will say, even on virtual days, you know, or on those office hour, I call them office hours, like college professor office hours, on Friday, a student can certainly come in and get additional help, catch up, get the support that they need, whether that's from the counselor, whether that's from the teacher. Those are kind of built in, but from a more systematic rotation piece, we can certainly look at that.
Where it looks like here, assisting students have come in to earn additional attendance minutes and complete work, it looks like that's student-driven. Could it be staff-driven?
And I think we do have some staff-driven pieces. So for example, like with House Bill 410, you know, if there's an attendance issue, you can build an attendance plan in that might change or tweak this kind of virtual in-person schedule as needed. You might need to say, hey, I need you to stay an extra hour, or I need you to finish this many virtual assignments. So part of those attendance plans that can be built in, or behavior plans even, can have some of those components in there.
So do you have a recommendation for us as it pertains to the facilities?
My biggest concern right now, so I'm going to answer that in two ways. There's some wonderful things happening at Central, for sure, for sure. I've seen it firsthand. My concern is our report card data. When you have one point five stars in a building, that is an isolated building that stands alone, that is my concern. You know, I also think there's the, the vision of, do, the question becomes, do we think it needs to be a standalone building? Or does it need to be integrated into a current high school experience, right? The report card data definitely causes me to pause. In that regard, I would think that we would, and I, and I'm going to, I'm going to say that, I'm going to preface this before I say this. I met with the Central staff recently because they had, there was a recording of a meeting or, I don't know, it was a board meeting, master facilities meeting, and they were concerned that this topic had come up. And I understand that, right? But, and I said this to them, and I'll say this again. My job is to ask questions, right? So that we can delve into things and figure out what is, what is best. And what is best short-term, what is best long-term? So it was not meant to create any angst, although I think it has amongst some staff and students, for sure. That was not the intent. It was to look at things and decide what we're going to do master facilities-wise, instruction-wise. So with that, I guess I would say, when you, I would not, I would not think that Central would fit in a destination district's long-term vision.
Do you think?
But, I'm sorry. But I'll say, if it goes away or it changes drastically, I think we have to look at a model to make sure that students are still successful and that are meeting the academic success that they need.
Do we have the ability, do you believe, in a facilities plan, because I know, to have Central-ish in East or West, run it the same way? Is that a possibility? Or do you feel like putting it in a, like, if we put it in a building, is it going to be more students want to do a semester worth of credit in a quarter?
Well, and I think, and again, this is where I pause my question in that, or the question that you asked me about my recommendation, because if we build the same high schools that we have right now, we are going to fail. I mean, if our job is to build the next high school for fifty, the next fifty years, and we build the exact same thing, shame on us, because it is not going to look like that, right? And so that is where I think, not just Central, right? So to your question, I think we need to think about maybe Central and our vision of high school differently. Now, not only vision as far as facilities, but as far as curriculum and instruction. Because if we think that high school kids are going to be sitting there for seven bells a day, waiting for the bells to ring, ring the bell, present the food, the dog salivates, right? Like, that's just not it. And so I don't think it's necessarily a Central piece. I think it is a high school, and you could probably even say seven through twelve, because high school has kind of become that now, experience that I think we need to think about differently. So even though I might say this doesn't fit in my mind in its current existence, I think we have an opportunity to really think about high school differently when we build and what that vision could look like, to maybe integrate this model-esque into a more normal high school experience for all, rather than just a hundred and ninety. So even though I think Central in its current being, again, I don't, I, it certainly has some merit in its like flexibility and innovativeness and things like that. I think we need to figure out how that translates to a larger scale for nine through twelve or seven through twelve of how we want to expand that. Because when you talk about internships and apprenticeships and all of those things, those don't happen after two-ten, right? Those are, those are going to be more the norm ingratiated into the day, which is flexibility, which is maybe doing some things online, which is, I think we just have to think about that a little bit differently as we continue to explore this model.
One of the things that stood out to me in this is, you know, I think we're all surprised at why people, like the SEL component of this, right? When I'm looking through the reasons for all of this, there's, there's a, there's a narrative of seeking a smaller environment, which isn't surprising given the size of our high schools. I think, I'm surprised that the focus on credit recovery and catching up, that we're not seeing better progress grades on the report card. And when I look at, like, this has become like a catch-all for a lot of people with individual needs. And I think we need to think through, I'm basically agreeing with you. I think we need to think through what we're delivering at the high school level. Because if I'm a kid who's really accelerated and want to graduate early, I should be able to do that at the high school. I shouldn't have to do this different type of, like, there's, there's a flexibility within those high schools that we can do, but I don't know if that solves for the students who are needing or seeking a smaller environment.
Well, and one of the things about the report card data that I'm very cognizant of, when you have a smaller N-size, every kid counts more, right? So like when you take a hundred and ninety kids, you know, that one point five stars can happen very quickly, not because there's like a mass problem, but because you have these one entities in this very small group that are counting very heftily against you. And so I, that is not without thought in my mind that it just looks different when you have an inside of two thousand versus an N-size of one ninety, right? And so you feel those individual blips, whether they're high or whether they're low. You feel those differently within that population than when they're more dispersed and spread out. So I think, I think one of the things also that, that is in here, and Central, I think, would say this, our high schools would say this, you know, part of that large, you want to make sure that students feel seen and valued and heard regardless of how many people are in the space, right? And that you have healthy check-ins with folks. So for us to continue to explore our class sizes, and I know that's more K-six than nine-twelve, but to explore but to explore class sizes, to explore counselor ratios, to explore supports that we have in place that are systematically enforced, those will kind of help some of those things as well, whether you're talking about Central, whether you're talking about junior highs, whether you're talking about high school. I think there are some pieces where we could, we could do better across the board at making sure children feel seen and heard even in a larger population. You know, I also think, we talked about, you know, when it says requires more adult eyes and regular check-ins, right? That, that's people, right? Having a systematic approach and having a good, healthy court, caseload to be able to check in to make sure that kids are doing okay, right? Whether that's tier one, tier two, tier three. The other piece down here in this data piece, Lakota Central, where it says a three-ten, one of the things we've talked about next year is oftentimes in Central, some of these numbers get higher with forty-eight, ninety-one, those kind of things. Because a student might start the main campus or they might start the freshman campus and they go into it in the middle of the year, right? So the numbers are flexing kind of all the time. We've talked about making sure that we are more diligent in our work and more proactive in our work, that if a student, if a student needs to start at Central, then let's start them at Central, not wait till they're a quarter in and then move them and it becomes clunkier, right? So we might see that freshman number expand a little bit more next year so that we can get people in the right seats from the get-go, rather than like a quarter in or a semester in. Because we do have kids who we think could benefit, but like I said, we're, we're in this little bit of a model of, well, we're going to wait and see. And then we're like, well, we wait and, it, it played out exactly as it, we thought it would, rather than us being proactive and maybe starting them out on a, a more successful note.
Christina, if you do have anything? I will say, when you look at the numbers, it is ballpark four percent, you know, especially if you include that thirty that's already graduated. And I do feel like some of these kids are probably, how many of them, it's the social, emotional piece, are not going to be physically able to attend a larger typical environment. So I, I hope that whatever the future visioning is, whether it looks like Central exactly now, we don't lose some way, you know, I, I even, like with more eyes on them, whatever, there are some kids who are just never going to be able to navigate our lunchroom. There are some kids who are never going to be able to walk in the mo, in the morning with now twenty-eight-hundred kids walking in with them. So I worry, I don't want to have four percent of our kids never make it across the finish line because we're trying to make them fit this model where regardless of the supports, they're not going to be able to fit within our typical model. But again, agree that we're also not doing them a service if we're not showing the growth and progress numbers we need to. But is there a way for us to reimagine this so that it can provide them?
Okay, like in any Central and Coach.
Yeah, without throwing it out entirely. Like, that's, but we don't want, we don't want to lose the good things that are happening there. We just want to figure out how to replicate them in a different way that has maybe a different success rate of data pieces. And data can mean qualitative, quantitative, those two.
And, and like you said, is this a broad or a narrow issue with the report card? I don't know if we can.
Well, with two years of data, it's hard to extrapolate that out. Do you know what I mean? I mean, really, when you're talking about, I mean, even when you look at now, you're about it, right? You're talking about a three-year trend. We don't, we don't have that. And so I think that longitudinal data that you might have in some other places, we just, it's just not there from a report card standpoint.
I think this is no different than looking at personalized learning plans for all schools that sit in all of our buildings. These kids have specific needs that need to be met, whether that's in a separate setting or in a, in a regular high school setting. They have specific needs and those needs happen in order for them to show success, so.
Well, and, you know, I know we're getting ready to go into master facilities. One of the things we had talked about is focus groups with high school students, right? I do think this is an opportunity to hear from our Central students as well of, talk to me my, about what might make a different, you know, how do we keep the good and still morph it? What, what, what might that look like? What might, what might those supports look like from a kid's point of view? Because a kid's point of view is very different than, than adult point of view, right? So I think making sure that maybe that is a separate focus group that we have as well, so that we hear from them directly.
I also think it would be interesting, I know we don't have, I know we don't have data more than just the two years, but it'd be interesting to know what kind of academic background some of these students are coming from prior to Central. Because essentially, you're taking students who are some of our most needy students or students who weren't showing up for multiple reasons. And I'm guessing that their data wasn't successful, very successful, prior to them going to Central. So when you talk about that N-size, these students are our most needy students. And I think we have to remember, maybe they have shown tremendous growth if you look at their individual test scores from prior to Central to now, but not enough growth to make a big difference.
And I think that's that academic struggle piece, you know? We do have several kind of significant credit deficiencies, right? But I also think you have a, an incident bullet three there, bullet three and four, you know, struggles with executive functioning, gaps in foundational skills, right? This is also a part of the intervention model, right? When you get to the high school, again, high school teacher, you know, I remember, I was in Lakota East High School, I remember I was teaching juniors. I had a junior student who was on the fifth-grade reading level and we're trying to read Walden's Pond, right? You're like, oh my goodness. Like, if our intervention model can work earlier so that those foundational gaps are not as wide, and then that executive functioning piece, you know, to juggle seven classes is no joke, right? Is no joke. And so I think, I think again, as we look at building in some supports earlier on, particularly, I think that becomes important in your MTSS model, our kind of executive functioning, I don't care how old you are, everybody needs executive functioning, right? So how do we build that into a more tier-one system, rather than, oh, you're in high school and now you need a tier-two or tier-three? How can we kind of build that in even in earlier, earlier experiences?
I have one quick, this last question. How, how did the staff get there? Like, is it voluntary, were they assigned?
Actually, I'm going to look to Rob on that one. Rob, staff originally when Central was formed, how did they get there? Was that voluntary request?
Yes. Yeah, because it was a change in practice of playing time now outside of the day and just some unique aspects that aren't necessarily covered in contract language. Because then you're saying, okay, now I know that I'm going against my contract language. I would not get playing every day, I would only get playing one day a week. And so it was the people that were willing to, to take that on and willing to work with, as Christina said, our most needy students.
And now, for example, if someone retired, it would be just like our normal process. It would post, you would have the ability to have an internal applicant. We would see if we would like that internal applicant and then we would go to external applicants if there was not an internal applicant. So I, I figured it was such that it was voluntary. But now, like I said, as people retire or resign or move to a different building, maybe for another internal application, we post the job and it kind of works through a normal process.
Anything else you need from us today with nine minutes?
Nope, I think we'll continue to, like, again, master facilities was the impetus behind this. Again, I think, and I, and I want to, and I want to say this, and I said this to the staff the other day, there are some wonderful things happening there, some wonderful things. And so I think figuring out how to replicate those things, again, and replicating those things even for the collective larger groups and building, again, whether it's a separate space, whether it's integrated, whatever we look at, making sure that we build the futuristic high school model that's going to get us through the next fifty, hundred years, whatever it may be, facilities-wise and instruction-wise.
Great. Unfortunately, we are not able to get to therapy dogs given our timing today.
We will talk about our dogs next time, next time.
I will take a motion to approve it, or, do I have a motion?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Adam, please.
Mr. Deef?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Sprechen?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Shaver?
Yes. Thank you. And now we will flip over to facilities.